Okay, my clock says 5:30, so we're going to go ahead and convene the Wednesday, May 1st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Ruth, would you like to call roll?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Miller?
Here.
Vice Chairman York?
Here.
Commissioner Mandel?
Here.
Commissioner Sarazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Motaghi?
Here.
Commissioner Lerma?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick?
Here.
Commissioner Budd?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
Okay, great. Moving on to the general public comments section, would you like to read in the rules of decorum?
Thank you, Chairman. Citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific item is being considered in order of the agenda.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on a general comment not pertaining to any specific agenda items tonight? I see none, so I will go ahead and close the public comment and move on to the approval of the absences.
I move that we approve the absences from April 17th.
Second, that's.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Mandel, I move that we approve the minutes from April 17th, 2024.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent, public hearing, discussion of possible actions, item number A.
Press a button, turn your mic on.
Control, alt, delete. Oh, wait, hold on. No, it says it's on.
Testing.
I think that's podium desk two, that's all.
Try it again.
It's this one on.
Testing, testing, testing.
Mark, it looks like this one was working. At least the green light was turned. It popped up on his screen.
Is that podium desk one?
Two.
Okay. Good evening. Commissioners, Mark Otosco with Development Services, Planner Three. I'm going to be reading into record consent items A, starting off with Platts. Item number two, Azali District Unit One, final plat of 28.91 acres, located west of Rebel Road and north of Saratoga Boulevard. This is a conditional approval. Item number three, conditional approval for Don Patricio Block S, Lot 39R, replat of .452 acres, located south of SPID and west of Waldron Road. Item number four, conditional approval for TGH2, this is a put, replat of 4.04 acres, located south of Baldwin Boulevard and east of Aztec Street. Item number five is for Solid Rock Industrial Park Phase One, final plat of 37.9 acres. Item number six, Solid Rock Industrial Park Phase Two, final plat of 14.1 acres, both located north of Old Bronzel Road and Junior Beck Drive. Item number seven, London School Tracks, Lot Four, final plat of 82.4 acres, located west of County Road 33 and north of FM 43. Item number eight, Palms at Moore Senior Living Subdivision Block Two, Lot One, final plat of 3.432 acres, located south of Agnes Street and west of Highway 286. All Platts are meeting the TRC review comments and the Texas Local Government Code. Staff is recommending approval on the all plat items.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioners, any questions for staff on items number, let's see, two through eight? I see none. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for items two through eight. Would anybody in the audience like to speak on items two through eight? I see none, so I'll close the public comment. And we do have a couple of abstentions for Commissioner York on items number five and six. So I'm going to call for a motion for items two, three, four, seven, and eight.
With Commissioner York, I'll make a motion that we approve items two, three, four, seven, and eight as presented.
Second. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Give them a second to leave. Now, I would like to call for a motion on items five and six.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Make a motion that we, for items five and six as presented by staff.
Commissioner Mandel, a second.
That's a motion for approval?
Approval, yes.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Give them a second to leave. Now, I would like to call for a motion on items five and six.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Make a motion that we, for items five and six as presented by staff.
Commissioner Mandel, a second.
That's a motion for approval?
Approval, yes.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item number nine.
You're not getting it right. I'm thinking exit that out.
It's on. How do we expand the?
Double tap on it.
Got it. I know, I'm still kind of confused why we, they're clearer monitors, but they're smaller.
Where's this slide?
I think we should all get Oculus headsets.
Good evening. Nick Winkelman, Interim Director of Water Systems and Support Services, CCW. Tonight, presenting an amendment to the water master plan. And to provide a little bit of background, Brazelton Development and Urban Engineering have requested an amendment to the current water master plan. The site is a total of 257 acres, 965 single-family residential lots, and has an estimated water demand at full build of 833,000 gallons per day. The amendment will add 1,460 linear feet of 12-inch master plan water line along County Road 35 and Saratoga Boulevard. This amendment request has been reviewed by Pape Dawson and also by Corpus Christi Water. And I would like to just make a comment that this is a change to a previously approved master plan amendment that this commission heard a couple of months ago. Next slide shows the location map. This specifically is affecting the parcel of land identified as number one on the slide. You can see on the, on the right portion of this slide, the new water line is the thick blue line. And again, what it'll do, it'll tie into an existing blow-off valve on our 42-inch transmission line, and then it will be bored under County, it will go under County Road 35 and then board under Saratoga Boulevard and make its way to the frontage of the development. The tie-in location on the significant transmission line, we call the south side transmission main, was identified by CCW, and we worked with the developer and their engineer to determine the location. Again, the staff, Corpus Christi Water recommend approval. This, and again, I do want to mention that because of the development work by Pape Dawson at the time, we reviewed it with them as well. So we would like to recommend approval, but I'm standing by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Winkelman? I see none. With that, I will open up the public hearing on item number nine, if anybody in the audience would like to speak on item number nine. I see none. All right. With that, we'll close. Any further discussion or motions?
Michael York, make a motion. We approve item nine as presented.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. I guess we don't have, or we have a director's report tonight?
We do.
Some more school?
Yes. Welcome to Impact Fee 101. Let's go back. Well, now we're at about 1801. But, so what I'm going to present tonight, sorry, Commissioners, Michael Dice, Assistant Director of Development Services. As we've gone over the past presentations for CAC meetings given by Pape Dawson and staff, this meeting, this presentation today is from the April 18th meeting, which was a culmination of two meetings. So we had a meeting in March that those decisions weren't made. It also had questions, so we came back in April, answered a bunch of those questions, and did the consideration that day on the 18th. Let's go this way. So this was our agenda for the day. I'll go through items five, which was the bulk of the agenda. We kind of moved order to make sure we discussed some of the policies and procedures, and then voted on the fees. The CAC members voted on the fees last. So again, we discussed item one and item seven. So basically, as we always start, we try to reset what an impact fee is, make sure that everybody knows this is Texas Local Government Code 395. It defines the fee, defines how fees are assessed, taken in when they're done. It lays out the whole explanation of the impact fee program. Another thing we talked about was how service units are made. You hear in different cities, EDU, you hear LRU. We have what's called ERU, which is more of the predominant use for the equivalent residential unit. So as you go through and you determine for water and wastewater, you have your ERUs. What you'll see on the right is a typical ERU is one single-family residence. And in Corpus, that's either a 5/8 or 3/4 meter, which happens to be about 93, 92% of all meters in Corpus. So with that, it gives a listing of all the different meter sizes and what those equivalent ERUs would be. Obviously, bigger meter, you could have more dwelling units, residential units on, on the larger meters. So as we go through stormwater, water, wastewater, transportation, there's, there's minor differences on how that's explained. Obviously, stormwater is specific to impervious cover, so we call that a KSF, 1,000 square feet for impervious cover. Water is that ERU, wastewater is the ERU, and then transportation is defined by vehicle miles. So again, we've talked about this in the past, how you go through the master plan process, the impact fee development process. This is all laid out by 395. You define the service areas of the different water, wastewater roads. You estimate those utility demands based on build-out, future growth, development of a 10-year CIP. What portion of those projects in that CIP are actually going to be growth-related, because that helps determine that algebra equation. You give a calculated weight per the service unit, and then you apply 50% deduction or credit as based on 395. It tells you, whatever that fee is, you take 50% off the top. And then you adopt and assess a maximum allowable, and then you assess a fee. So again, for easy math, you could say, based on the calculation, you could charge $2,000 maximum based on the 50%, but you can assess much less. And we'll talk about that later, because that's what happened. So policy and procedure came up. We moved it up in the agenda to talk about it. One of the main things is making sure that we have a policy in place before impact fees goes live. All those policies and procedures, those things are already being drafted. We will review those with CAC, and those will have a recommendation to council at a later date. It, it won't be done by the July target of a council vote, but part of their recommendation, which I'll mention later, is that these have to be in place before the start of any impact fee collection. So the chair wanted to form a subcommittee. Looks like we're not going to be able to do a subcommittee, but we'll do special meetings of the CAC, the whole group. Then we'll go over those policies and procedures at those meetings. Again, by state law, we have a schedule that we have to follow. You have to meet every so often, talk about, once impact fees are there, you have to talk about what's in the accounts, how it's being spent. Everything has to have an update. Then every three to five years, you have to discuss, hey, this is what's going on. Do we need to adjust these fees lower or higher? So CAC will have standard meetings throughout the process. And again, any revisions, like I said, to the impact fees will have to be done by CAC.
Quick question, Mike. Let's say, you know, let's say the initial impact fee is $2,000. And then after reevaluation, you decide that that was too much. Is there any kind of rebate back to the developer that paid in that much?
Nope. My understanding is, once the fee is set and the fee is paid, that, that remains that, it's much like if a fee goes down, which, by the way, we're going to talk about reducing some fees in our budget. If you've already paid those fees, you don't get a rebate in those fees.
Right.
There's nothing listed in 395 about rebating. Now, there are potential for developer agreements where those could be discussed, but at this time, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay, thanks.
So again, as we talked about those policies and procedures, we've laid out a lot of things that may come up. As we look for the standardized utility service agreements or developer agreements, we'll have to have a kind of a boilerplate language for those. Adoption of drainage design manual, and we already have some detention requirements, but this would get more specific. Things like the timing of payments, of when that payment for the impact fee would be done. 395 lays that out in certain thresholds. Redevelopment requirements, if it's a redevelopment, does it incur an impact fee since it basically was on, already on service? Application of credits that we've talked about, you know, trust funds that were already initiated, fee waiver considerations based on the economic impact. A number of cities use impact fee waivers as an economic development tool. City procedures for reporting and tracking, again, it's required by 395. Implementation, large fees for large volume users outside the city, and then again, collection for newly annexed, annexed areas. So these are some of the questions that were brought up in the first meeting in March that we addressed in the meeting in April. Again, is the city going to set up seed money? We don't have any seed money set up. It's going to be on a collection basis where we're going to try to implement those developer agreements early to get the process going. How will we fund? Obviously, there's no seed money. Will CAC have an input defining the impact policies? Yes, we've already said that CAC will give a recommendation to council of those policies. And stakeholder meetings, yeah, but just like everything else we do, we'll have stakeholder meetings, including the CAC meetings that'll have public discussion. When do they vote? When will city council have to vote on the impact fees? We're targeting impact fee votes in July. Again, now that CAC has a vote, which I'll talk about at the end. Is the stormwater impact fee the same as the utility, stormwater utility fee? No, it's different. That's, that's based on existing impervious cover. The stormwater fee for, impact fee is for new development specifically. Can a city charge a flat rate? By 395, no. You have to have, you have to be equitable to what that algebra is. You know, you can't charge a flat rate for a house and then charge the same for a Costco. It's just not equitable. And this is a lot of language, but basically, at what point do we charge fees? So 395 lays out when you can start the fee process. We would assess the fee. We can assess the fee before or at the time of plat recordation. So if I submit a plat of 100 lots, and it gets to either at or before recordation, the fees that are at that time are assessed. If, for whatever reason, as you mentioned, there may be a fee change, those are assessed, so it's based on that plat date. When it's charged, you can charge that at the building permit or a TAP, depending on the location of the request. If it's outside the city limits, we would do it at TAP, if you do it at a building permit. And that's, again, part of the policy discussion that's going to happen with CAC on when the actual fee is charged. You could charge either at plat or building permit. We're recommending building permit, because that's the way 99% of the cities do it. So this was item two on the agenda, was the recommendation on stormwater. So we had a lot of options out there, the consultant options, and how, again, stormwater, we're only doing the one service area. Now, within that, you could do multiple service areas within that OSA basin. If you remember, we talked about having it as one, and then keying on two other areas. Excuse me. You could get finite like that, but it becomes complicated. So option one was simply one service area. The calculated fee would be 30.54 per 1,000 square foot, which is about $100 per single-family residential. Option two was expanding that into two. Option three was having three, where you would charge multiple if you built within, say, like Basin Three. Again, we're not recommending that. CAC had discussion, and you'll, and I'll take a step back. Some of these options you'll see laid out from the first meeting. Some of these options were what we brought back from the second meeting based on the discussion. So this one, we had several options discussed, but we brought back one, which was a single service area, which is what ourselves and the consultant recommended. Option five and option six were CAC member, option five was a consolidation of discussion, option six was a CAC members' alternative. And again, I'll talk about what was approved at the very end. So wastewater impact fees. Wastewater, again, the service areas are defined by the wastewater treatment plants. We have six. We looked at six areas. We also looked at taking everything as a weighted average. You have the six areas, weight the average, and that creates, again, a little easier, easier to understand, a fee that could be assessed and utilized across many different areas. So the recommendations were the one service area at the treatment fee and infrastructure fee, total of 1268. We had a CAC alternative of 612. What that was is infrastructure only. And then option three was another, which would take the 612 and just divide that by the two, treatment and infrastructure. Recommendation for water. This one, again, also got a little complex. Although we only have two areas recommended, we got into the discussions of, with an impact fee, you can, you can charge for water source and supply. Do we include desalination? Do we exclude desalination? Do we include desal at a certain level? Do we exclude it? So we went through all the discussions, to make a long story short. Secondary discussions, CAC member alternatives. We ended up taking option seven, and again, I'll discuss that at the end, which was strictly for system transmission lines. Impact fees for roadways. So in the discussions we had in the March meeting, you know, we talked about excluding some of the bigger streets and some of the roads that are already done, those A3 roads, which are highways. Do we include those or exclude those for the calculation? Then that reduction, the 50%, which is laid out by the state law, do we increase that deduction to lower the fee based on the fact that most of the city projects were already encumbered for bonds or going to be on, on some sort of public funding? And then again, multiple service areas, by state law, you have to have a service area for six, every six square miles, which means we would have 21 service areas. That just becomes sticky in the sense where you, you could really have two sides of the street being different service areas and how money is spent in, in those areas. So again, we had the options that included all roads. We had an option that included, excluded A3s, which are the highways, and then we had an option that excluded the A3s and the C1s. Based on, again, on that discussion, when we look at what we had proposed, the consultant was that 90% reduction, which means it would only be a 10% impact fee in excluding the A3. We had two additional proposals of 70-30 split and 100-0 split. This kind of shows you what those fees would be across 21 service areas. Again, it's a lot to look at, but not to give away the climax of the movie, but it was adopted at zero. So. So, this is what the, the 21 service areas look like. So the implementation, again, that's part of the policy discussion that we're going to have going forward, but we had that discussion in CAC, they recommended having at least 12, but looking at 18 months. We recommended that we do it with the fiscal year, which is October 1 of 25, that's actually 15 months. So it does give more than a year, if council adopts it in July, to get policies in place, accounts set up, you know, staff ready to go, developers will have, you know, will give trainings on what this is and what that is, a lot of stakeholder engagement throughout that whole process. So really, this is what it comes down to, so at the end, the vote was 13-2, stormwater would just be the single service area, would be assessed $100 for what's called an ERU, or single-family residential, and then the key to the vote was, this would exclude non-residential, so commercial would not pay a stormwater impact fee. Wastewater, the adopted rate was adopted at the maximum, but they only approved and assessed at 612, and the 612 was strictly for infrastructure, $0 towards treatment. Water, combined all the service areas together, the two service areas together, again, they adopted at the max, which is 1866, but recommended the assessment at 950, and that 950 is for transmission only, did not include treatment or water source. Transportation already gave away the plot, 21 service areas, they adopted at even less of a max rate, instead of the recommended 10 that we had, it was cut in half to five, and they are assessing the fee at zero, so no transportation impact fees will be collected, or zero will be collected. And then finally, implementation, implementation date after discussion, October 1, which is the beginning of the fiscal year 25. And that is it.
Can I ask a question on the stormwater?
Yeah.
What was the, just a summary version, what was the reason for not having commercial pay the stormwater fee?
So there was a lot of discussion, pretty robust discussion, on what commercial entities have to pay already for their monthly stormwater fee, and requirements that are already required for stormwater detention. So this is basically a starting point, much like any of these fees, these are all starting points.
So the stormwater fee you pay on your utility bill, or however they pay it, that's, that, that will stay, so that's, that's what you're saying?
It just has nothing to do with that.
So that, that'll still exist, so you're, this is basically, so we're not double-dipping?
Well, again, it's a separate fee, it's, it's completely separate from 395 fees. They could charge both, but the, the discussion landed on the fact that, hey, if I've got 70,000 square feet of parking lot, I'm already paying a lot of fee to maintain storm, I'm already required to now detain that stormwater, let's start at zero and see if in the future we need to raise that. And there again, that, that's why 395 lays all that out, where we have to come back and continually look at the fees and see if, does this fee work? Is it too high? Is it too low? Are we missing opportunities for potential development in this area or that area? So it mandates that we don't just sit on it. It makes sure that the committee that was approved by council, their appointees, meet consistently to review and, and, you know, a gathering of the tribe to make sure that development happens in a, in a good manner. So, again, starting point, much like the transportation was at zero across the board, that's a starting point. What it does by, by adopting the max and assessing at a lower rate, it gives the ability to council to go back and forth in those fees. If you adopt the max at a lower max, you can only go to the max. So this gives a varying level, so starting at zero and looking at it every so often is a good way for the city to be on top of it.
But I'm not seeing any commercial impact fees on this slide.
Well, other than your, your wastewater and your water.
Right, but it's showing the fee assessment on ERUs, not KSFs.
Yeah, ERU, it would be for commercial, it's based on your meter size. So a six, let's say a six-inch meter is 70 ERUs, so you would pay basically that ERU fee times 70.
Okay. Is, is there a, are y'all working on a fee calculator?
Yes.
Okay.
So other cities, we've actually taken a lot of inspiration from the city of Lubbock, they've got a good fee calculator. We'll do, we'll have all that out there, again, as part of what council adopts, the minute that they adopt it, we'll be able to put those line items in that calculator and have it online.
Okay, I'd love to get a preview of that, if possible.
Well, we're going to talk about it in CAC and all those meetings as well, before anything is actually implemented, it has to be, our, our goal is to have everything approved by CAC first, so a fee calculator, a policy, anything like that would have to go through them.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions?
Can you talk to me about CAC and what they're, I know they're the recommended body, so from here on out, if impact fees are implemented, CAC is kind of the first step before it gets to council?
Correct.
So what are, what are the terms of the CAC members? How are they appointed? How long are their terms?
Two years. Council member appointees are two years based on terms, and then the additional city manager appointees are opposite to those terms.
So each council member gets one appointee?
Yes.
They're not voted on, they're just appointed by that council member?
Correct. Well, the, yeah, they're just appointed.
Okay.
No vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody's voting against anybody's appointee if it's their appointee.
I just want to get Bart Brazelton off of there. But, uh...
I mean...
No, I'm kidding.
Give him a break.
On October 1st, 2025...
I'm a dad, jokes.
On, on 10/1/2025...
Yep.
Whenever we officially divorce...
Well, if council approves it.
If, if council approves and we officially divorce the trust fund and start day one impact fees, what happens to negative fund balances in the trust fund?
Those will have to be looked at by the city manager for taking care of those.
But you can't, you can't, you can't use collected impact fees to reconcile...
Nope.
Negative fund balances...
Nope.
Trust funds.
Texas 395 is very specific, can't do that.
I'm curious to see how they work that out, and then...
We're going to have a bake sale.
Yeah. Cake walks are always fun.
At one of the Brazelton neighborhoods.
That's what Bart gets for showing up here today.
Yeah, well, he is a CAC member.
On, one of the discussion items as a possible use for type A development funds has been a citywide flood mitigation type deal, should that, you know, inevitably get on a ballot and pass, you know, and then you're collecting these stormwater fees, is there cross-pollination there, or?
I can't speak for that.
Right.
Again, at this point, there, the only stormwater fee is, is the residential per-lot fee or the residential ERU, there is nothing for commercial. I, I can't speak for how a type A fund would be spent or cross-pollination.
But from a, from a procedural standpoint, CAC has made a recommendation for a fee structure, and then, once this goes to council, it's a up-down vote, right? Or can the council adjust these fees at all?
Council can make their own recommendation, so if council, we present it and we serve it up, if council, for whatever reason, says, I don't think we should charge that fee, or we should raise that fee, that's up to them to make that action.
Okay.
We give them CX recommendation, our recommendation, and it's up to them to make that decision.
Okay, so, so they, they can do whatever they want with each individual fee?
Well...
It's not an up-down vote for the slate?
Up to a max, up to a max and down to a zero.
Right.
Anywhere in between.
Okay. And that's all the questions I have.
So we'll keep you in check on when those meetings are going to happen, we do have our joint task workshop meeting coming up next week, and that'll be y'all, then, and city council. We plan on taking this to city council in July, so between now and then, there'll be a lot of, like, we have a neighborhood meeting tomorrow night, we've got, we're going to be meeting in all districts, so we'll have a lot of engagement, builders association, we're going to do a special meeting for all stakeholders at ABC, I don't think that date's been set yet, but we'll invite, you know, ABC, AGC, AIA, all the groups that develop in town, and make sure that everybody has a chance to hear and have a voice.
Joint meetings news to me.
It's the 15th, right? I have it on my calendar as a 15th.
Oh, so it's the following week.
15th, right? Did I say the wrong date?
So next week, I don't figure it out really, where is it?
Sorry.
It's May 15th.
It's been a long, long couple of weeks.
Yeah, this January's been real long.
Yeah. But, you know, I'll, I'll talk to the powers that be on that type A question, I just, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, cool. Well, you scared me there for a second, but I guess we're good.
Not here to scare.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, if there's no future gen items or any other business, this meeting is adjourned.